Welcome to debate for mayor and city council District 3 seat for the city of Victoria. Sponsored by Lone Star News Network and Shaw Realty. I'm Caleb Shaw, host of Meet Victoria and owner of Shaw Realty. Our goal with this debate is to inform the public and to provide the candidates with a fair opportunity to convey their points to the community. I want to thank each and every one of our candidates that are running and their families. It isn't easy to run for office. You open up your lives for scrutiny and sacrifice and you take time away from your family. So, thank you. Additionally, I want to thank Ash Wade from the Wade and Carter Show for moderating and Bill Winlandt for his kind help in providing us with this beautiful venue. The election is July 3rd and early voting is June 16th through the 29th. And now, without further delay, I'll send you over to Ash for the rules, the forum, and to get this show going. Ash, take it away.
Thank you Caleb. Candidates, good evening. Welcome to the debate for the special election on July 3rd. I'll go through the rules and then we'll get started with a series of questions. Our candidates this evening are Lee Cantu, Dwayne Crocker, Aaron Franco, Joseph Geismann, and Chad Hall. Five candidates vying for city council District 3. Each candidate will have one minute for opening remarks and following the opening remarks, a series of questions will be asked of each candidate. The same question will be asked to each candidate. You'll also have one minute to respond to those questions. And then, a 60-second rebuttal may be permitted if a candidate is directly responded to in the answer. So, you will have a chance to rebut if there is a direct, if you are a direct respondent in the answer. Ashton is the timer this evening. She will flash up a 30-second warning and a 15-second warning and then time up will be announced after 60 seconds. As a courtesy, please do not respond beyond the 60 seconds, just so that everybody has the same times. We're all playing by the same rules. And following the series of questions, there will be one minute allowed for closing remarks for this evening. So, we did draw numbers prior to, and Dwayne, you selected podium number one, so you will get to go first. Your opening remarks, please.
Sure. Thank you, I appreciate it. And let me say this, Caleb, I appreciate you having us here for this platform so we can speak to the voters. My name is Dwayne Crocker. I'm a native son of Victoria, born and raised here. Left Victoria, went to Texas A&amp;M University, received a political science degree, and then went to Texas Tech University and received a Doctor of Jurisprudence. Came back to Victoria and have been practicing law here for 26 years now. Through that 26 years, I've discovered the answer to the most common question I get right now is why are you running for city council? And it goes back to a quote that someone told me, a good friend of mine, he said, "I've been working in Victoria, I'm ready to work on Victoria." And that's really resonated with me. I've done that through civic boards, I've done that through my professional life and representation of particularly the Victoria County Navigation District. I'm looking forward to taking that background, that experience, putting it to work for the citizens of Victoria as the city council representative for District 3.
Thank you, Dwayne. Aaron, your opening remarks, please.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Franco. I was born and raised in Corpus Christi, Texas, and made my way to Victoria as quickly as possible. I've been here since September of 2019, though I may not have been here as long as the rest of the candidates here tonight. I don't look at that as a downfall, I look at that as an asset to our community. With me, you get a fresh set of eyes on our community and a dedicated candidate. I'm running for city council District 3 a second time because I want to show my dedication to this community and how much it means to me. I look forward to being on council if elected and I hope that, you know, I can work with everybody and the same for if someone else is elected. Thank you.
Joseph Geismann.
All right. Good evening. My name is Joe Geismann. I stand before you as a fourth-generation Victorian who loves his family as much as his community. I'm running for city council because I believe every last resident of the city of Victoria deserves a councilman that works hard and has the best interest of all Victorians. My vision for Victoria includes the responsible use of our citizens' tax dollars as we continue to grow and prosper. Economic growth and creating a broader tax base are important so we can ease the tax burden on the residents as the city grows and the cost of maintenance grows. I want Victoria to be an attractive place so people and businesses will see our city as a viable option to plant their roots. I'm also an avid supporter of all of our first responders and I can promise to everyone here that as a city councilman, I would not support any defunding of any of our first responders. In fact, I would actually make sure that they had everything they needed to do their jobs properly in order to protect the city of Victoria and its residents.
Lee Cantu.
My name is Lee Cantu, and I want to, I'm running to be your future city councilman in District 3. I'm running my campaign on three principles. Experience, the knowledge and experience that I bring to the table, working closely with the LAPC Local Emergency Planning Commission for several years, also running two years as co-chair, five years working for the city of Victoria as a safety risk officer, and then 10-plus years as a fireman and EMS in Bloomington Volunteer Fire Department. Second principle is committed. I want to be committed to the folks of Victoria, knowing that I volunteered primarily all my life, following the footsteps of my dad, and I want to be committed to the citizens of Victoria. Third is honesty. I want to be honest and transparent with all the folks here in Victoria and let them know that the only way that I can understand the concerns and the problems in Victoria is to be out in the neighborhoods and talking to the folks. I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Chad Hall.
Hello, everybody. My name is Chad Austin Hall. I'm the general manager of Regional Steel Products, where I've worked for about 15 years. I live in Bridle Ridge with my wife Michelle and our daughter Georgia in the same first home we bought just about 20 years ago. I'd like to thank everybody, the candidates first, for being here to share your vision and mission with all the candidates, constituents with, that we live with in District 3, the sponsors, Asher Bing, the moderator, the people in the audience, and especially the people out on Facebook Live. Thank you for tuning in and listening in tonight. I graduated from the University of Houston, right here in Victoria, with my masters in business administration. I'm running for city council because I believe I'm a well-qualified candidate. I began a career at the city of Victoria as a human resource analyst, and I've graduated from all three civilian academies. And in addition to that, I have an extensive background in creating jobs here in Victoria and business experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. And now, we'll begin with the questions, beginning with Dwayne. Dwayne, why did you decide to run for city council?
Well, going back to my opening remarks, I think I have a specialized skill set that I've developed working in Victoria. I want to put that skill set to use to work on Victoria. I'm looking at the future, what the future holds for Victoria in terms of the American Rescue Plan, how we can put that money to work, and I think my experience that I have in representing governmental entities will help in things like infrastructure development, putting that money to work on capital improvement projects, putting that money to work on things like broadband for the city. I think those are very important. I want to, I'm running for city council because I want to make a difference and I think I have the skill set, I think I have the knowledge and experience to do that, and I'm looking forward to doing that.
Thank you. Aaron, same question. Why did you decide to run for city council?
Well, I decided to run for city council because I think this is the perfect opportunity and I'd be the perfect candidate to bridge the gap between our old Victoria and our ever-growing new Victoria. Being the youngest candidate up here today, I'm the person for that. You know, I bring a fresh set of eyes to the community and I feel like, as the youngest person here, I can show my true dedication to this community. I moved here recently and immediately fell in love with this town, and I want to do everything that I can to ensure that we have a successful future.
Thank you. Joe, why did you decide to run for city council?
One of the main reasons I decided to run for city council was, for decades and decades, we keep hearing the potential Victoria has, how we can grow. We're the largest city in the Golden Crescent, and we have a lot of very good, hard assets here, is railways, port, airport, and of course, our highways. And I believe that it's time that we quit saying that we have a lot of potential for Victoria and we start actually realizing that and going for it. And with the new introduction of our new city manager, I believe I have a lot of energy and a lot of great ideas and ways to grow the city and ways to just expand that and bring in a lot of outside sales revenue to ease the burden on our ever-growing property tax issues we're having here in Victoria. So, I believe that's mainly why I'm running, is just to kind of realize this economic growth and the full potential that Victoria can be.
Thank you. Lee, why did you decide to run for city council?
Well, like I said in my opening statement, I've pretty much volunteered my whole life. Started off with Victoria Livestock Show probably when I was 12-years-old and always followed my dad's footsteps and giving back, and it's been a blessing in disguise. But as far as running for city council, the years of experience that I've had and the knowledge that I have, not only working for the city for five years, but also working in the general industry, working in the plants for almost 32-years now. That's one thing that the economic growth here in Victoria would be the industrial park area, bringing more companies, larger companies into Victoria. I want to be part of that change with Victoria, and I think with my experience in the plants' business, I think I can bring something to the table for that.
Thank you, Lee. Chad, why did you decide to run for city council?
One of the reasons I decided to run for city council, I believe that the city actually does a great job on many, many things. And as a business leader myself, I know that sometimes it's hard to communicate your message out there to the public, and one of the reasons that I ran is because I want to jump in and help out. Oftentimes, it's a case that facts are negotiable, but perceptions are not. We think things may be one way, but they actually turn out to be something different. And in going through the experience that I had at the city and through the academies, I learned a lot of things that weren't necessarily the way that I thought they were. Why don't we have better roads? Why don't we have this? Why don't we have that? There's so many different restrictions that are placed on how we do budgeting, how we do expenditures, that I not only want to be a representative, I also want to be a resource. I want to be the person that's out there trying to help our community, using my influence to teach people that this is the way it actually is, how can we work together to attain the goals we want to achieve?
Thank you, Chad. Chad, we'll start the next questions off with you. You're one of several that have to work on city council, but you represent District 3. What do you see as the top priority or top two priorities for District 3 as if you were to be elected city councilman?
Sure. The District 3 actually has some of the main corridors that are coming into Victoria. We have 87, we have 77, we have the Zachlin's Parkway that's going through. A big concern for me right now, Michelle and I, we've lived in the same house, like I said, for the past 20 years, and here lately, we're hearing a lot more police sirens. We're hearing a lot more car chases going up and down the road. And in keeping with everything that we know is happening in the county, we're concerned that we want to be able to support our first responders to make sure that they have all the resources that they need to protect us. I think that public safety, public safety is probably our number-one concern in that Beyond that, like I said earlier, I want to be a bridge between the city. The people who work at the city love their jobs. They're responsible for making everything work so the rest of us can actually work in the city. So, I'm hoping to be a bridge between the people that work at the city with our constituents to work together to make a better Victoria.
Thank you. Lee, what do you see as the top priority or top two priorities for District 3?
Well, one of the primary priorities, as I've been out and about talking to the folks in District 3, is the roads. There's a lot of concerns about the roads, the conditions of the roads, the way they have. The company, the Victoria City hired a company last year and they did a survey of all the streets with some new modern technology, and it's proven and it's given us an ability to have this data and to be able to mark the streets, how we, how the priority is how we fix the streets. I think I'm really looking forward to being involved in that and getting feedback to the citizens of Victoria. Like Chad said, we both work for the city, the city employee, the city has very talented employees, and we want to make sure that we retain that talent, and I want to work with council to be able to retain those employees.
Thank you. Joe, as a resident of District 3, what do you see as the top priority or top two priorities for the district?
You know, I mean, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but a lot of, a lot of roads and mainly inside of our neighborhoods, the roads inside of our neighborhoods, there's a lot of complaints with the way the potholes are being fixed and filled, they're not really being fixed, they're being filled, and it's washing back out continually and making them worse. So, that's a big, a big concern. Another big thing for District 3 I would like to see, I feel our new Main Street in Victoria is our loop coming around, and I would like to see more development, you know, in District 3 in regards to that area. And talking to business owners, I've been talking to a lot of local business owners and working towards, trying to see if the city can ease some of the fees and the permissions to do a lot of things with their own businesses is a big, a big concern for our local business owners that I feel like they're not being heard on.
Thank you. Aaron, what do you see as the top priority or top two priorities for District 3?
So, one of the things that I noticed when I moved here is that District 3 houses the main shopping district in Victoria. Majority of our shopping is done in that district. So, we have a lot of people that live outside of District 3 coming in, going to the mall and other retailers, but with that comes a large homeless population that is stationed in our district. So, as a candidate and a potential council member, I think that we need to come together to figure out a solution that, for our homeless population here in Victoria, which has nearly tripled over the past few years. So, we need to come up with a solution for that to get our neighbors back on track so that we can be a successful community as a whole and not just partially successful. The other issue that I would say, or top priority, would be our communication with our constituents, letting them know what we're doing, why we're doing it, and where we're doing it. Because if we're not letting them know, they may not notice what's going on. So, I think communication is going to be a key factor in that.
Great, thank you. Dwayne, what do you see as the top priority or top two priorities for District 3?
I think the top priorities for District 3 are basically the essential functions of local government, and that applies across the city. You know, fire and police, you have roads and bridges, and you have utilities. Beyond those, I mean, those have to take priority across the city, District 3 not excluded. Beyond those, District 3 is the fastest-growing part of the city, both from a commercial standpoint but also from a residential standpoint. Our master plans have to address that growth. What are we going to do with roads? What are we going to do with utilities? How are we going to count for both commercial growth and residential growth in District 3? Once we have that master plan in place, then we have to implement that master plan efficiently and effectively using taxpayer dollars for the long-term benefit of the taxpayers. I think that's extremely important, and that all comes into, or also plays into, development. What kind of, what kind of entities do we want to develop there? What do we want to bring in? The other thing that I would say is TechStop has a lot of programs in District 3, including the medians that we may or may not like. My understanding is they're responsible for maintaining them. We need to make sure they're maintaining them.
Thank you. Aaron, I'll start with you for the third question. You've all sort of touched on this, but the city's growth is headed to your direction or if not, in your district. How would you ensure that the district's existing infrastructure can keep up and handle that growth?
So, I think we really need to take a look at our city's master plan and the thoroughfare master plan as well, and how that addresses District 3 directly. We, as a community, are growing. Victoria has changed drastically since I got here in 2019, and it's predominantly in my district. So, I really think we need to reevaluate what we've done and figure out what has worked for us, and then see if it hasn't worked, how we're going to change that so that we can be successful and so that District 3 isn't negatively affected by these changes that we're seeing. Thank you.
Joe, how does, how does District 3, how does the existing infrastructure, how do you plan to have that cope and handle the growth of the city, which is primarily heading towards District 3?
Well, I think foresight has a lot to do with that. We're seeing now what we're having to do with our exit on 463. We're going to have to take that, and it's a joint effort with TechStop from what I understand, and move it back in order to allow access to the new Home Shop, or the Home Depot Shopping Center that we're going to be putting in. Also, the new road we built by Walmart going back to Salem, you know, are we going to have to widen that road and make it, you know, for more busier traffic because that is where a lot of growth is? So, I think in order to save us money in construction and shutting things down, it's going to be a lot of foresight. We really need to think 20-years from now, 10, 15-years from now, is this road we're building or this sidewalk we're building, is what we're doing going to be viable 10 to 20-years from now? Or is it going to have to be removed and rebuilt at our expense again? So, I believe foresight into that is probably our biggest, biggest challenge with the growth.
Lee, how would you ensure the district's existing infrastructure can handle the growth of the city?
Well, like I said in my opening statement, it's being honest and committed, understanding what the concerns are and in the community what the needs are. I totally agree with these gentlemen here about the infrastructure of what's being done in the community. There's a lot of new things that are going on, and with the 2035 plan, there's a lot of projects. I think you all have seen on the barrel where the old Texas, or the, it used to be TechStop was the city's, that's being taken down, and we're going to have some new buildings coming up there. It's a strip center. So, there's a lot of things that are in place that are taking action now. I've never been on city council, so I can't honestly tell you an exact answer, and I don't, like I've told my constituents, I don't want to make you a promise that I cannot, but I will be committed and honest about what I bring to the table, and hopefully we can do something together.
Thank you. Chad, how would you ensure the district's existing infrastructure can handle the growth of the city and the district?
I think it really depends on how you answer the question, growth, because I'm not so sure that's exactly what's happening here. The city does have a good plan as far as the CIP goes, the master plans with the infrastructure. I think that's all fine and good, but what I'm more concerned about, housing is a major concern for us here in Victoria, and I think that the way that our property taxes are actually rising with the decrease of homes we have being built, this is a big concern. I think it's going to actually stifle our growth. So, I know that the city has the infrastructure part taken care of, but I'm more concerned about the housing. Right now, HUD says that an average family of four makes about $72,500 a year. The median household price in Victoria right now is $190,000, and a concern for me and another reason why I decided to run for city councils, because I want to keep our talent here. You're going to hear me talk a lot about talent turnover. We have people come to Victoria, they leave Victoria. We train them here and they move on somewhere else to better their communities. So, I'm more interested in what we can do from a housing perspective to spur economic growth.
Dwayne, the city's growth seems to be headed right to your district. So, how would you ensure that the district's existing infrastructure can handle that growth?
Sure. And I know I'm going to sound like I'm beating the same drum here, but, you know, I've harped on from day one in talking to people and talking to potential voters, the master plans are hugely important. We have the 2035 plan, but we have these other master plans in place. They have to be put together, looking around corners. That's what I do for a living for my clients. When I'm drafting a contract, I'm looking around a corner, not what's going to happen in the next, in the short-term, but what could happen long-term, and how do we prepare for that? How do we draft for that? How do we plan for that? Economic development in Victoria has focused on bringing, bringing businesses from outside. I think we need to shift to bringing businesses from inside, but with that economic development, if we do it right and we do it appropriately, we are going to have additional housing issues. Let's, let's plan for those houses that are going to be needed for new businesses that come into town that need place for their employees to work. We have to plan for that in the future, and that's how we account for that, is through these master plans and coordinated implementation.
Thank you. Next question, Joseph, we'll start with you. People always seem to complain about the tax structure or the high taxes in Victoria. How would you on city council either be better stewards of tax dollars or work to lower taxes for residents of Victoria?
Well, I think one of people's biggest concerns with that is CAD. I mean, yeah, we can look and see our property tax rates have gone down, but yet our property tax income has just completely declined because of our skyrocketing valuation of houses. So, I believe addressing that, but also kind of how I said in my previous statement, is bringing in retail sales from outside the community to help ease the burden on residents here. And I believe if we do, if we do continue with the economic growth and we do find a way to get these businesses to stay, which a lot of places fail in Victoria for some reason, but if we can get these to stay and we start bringing in outside sales revenue, sales tax revenue, that's going to naturally ease the burden on our taxpayers because I'm very against taxes and I'm, I'm very fiscally conservative, even though most people don't understand what that term means, they throw it around pretty loosely, but that's how I feel, is bringing in more outside sales tax.
Thank you. Lee, same question to you regarding taxes. Would you be a good steward of the existing tax dollars or would you look to work to lower the tax rate for, the tax burden for our citizens?
Absolutely, thank you. Like Geismann said, taxes have been in question here lately with, in Victoria for the last couple of years. The increase of prices of homes has really gone, gone skyhawk, high, excuse me. One of the things that we need to understand is, if you look at the budget, the budget is, you have the general fund, which is 31% of the general, the budget for the fiscal year. That is only 31%, and that 31% comes from sales tax and property tax. With the sales tax and the property tax, that doesn't even cover the funds for law enforcement, fire, and any other emergency services. So, yes, we really need to focus on what areas can we improve on, but I can only do that once I get to council because other than that, I can't make any promises at this time.
Chad?
Earlier, you heard me say that sometimes facts are negotiable, but perceptions are not. One of the things I want to dispel first is it's a common misconception that city council actually sets the appraisal values, and that's why our property taxes are so high. That's not the case. The city has actually been, to their credit, pretty good about holding the tax rate steady over the last several years, and they have all that information on their website. I've recently done a video on ChadForVictory.com that talks about sales tax versus property tax, and what we're seeing here is that for the first time, our property tax has eclipsed the sales tax. It's an inverse relationship. So, the revenue that we're getting from generating taxes is at odds with each other. Sales tax is a better indicator of economic growth and how we're truly doing. Property tax, when, this kind of comes into the housing concern that I had for you earlier. I'm on the board of directors for Habitat, and one of the things that's very concerning for us is even when a family qualifies for a home at Habitat, they're paying the exact same price on their mortgage as they are their property taxes right now. That's how bad it's gotten out of line.
Thank you. Aaron, same question to you on taxes.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would want to take a look at it. I can't make any promises right now, but one of the things that I would like to do is, you know, focus on communication with our constituents, letting them know exactly what our tax dollars are being used for. You know, one of the things that, you know, we've talked about before is that we don't know what's going on in this community because we don't, we don't have that communication. And the city tries to do their best and post on their website and on Facebook and other social media outlets, but it's going to be our job as a council to really advocate for our community and get that message across. So, that's what I would like to do on council, is be that voice for the community and letting them know exactly what their tax dollars are being used for so that they're aware.
Thank you. Dwayne, regarding taxes, would you be in favor of being a good steward of the existing tax dollars or would you look to provide some relief for homeowners and lower taxes?
Well, I think every candidate that's ever run for local election has said, "I'd love to, you know, lower taxes and fix the roads." I mean, you know, the reality is, is that, that services that are provided, what a local entity can do is dependent upon the tax dollars that come in. You know, I've looked through the budget of the city, you know, I'm not going to tell you that I found anything that, you know, that big aha moment that I went, "Oh, well, here's where all the money's going to." I mean, these funds, as Lee pointed out, property taxes don't even cover, you know, a fraction of what we need to. And so, I think, I think economic development is important there. Obviously, sales taxes took a big hit in 2020. More and more, we've got, you know, internet sales and that sort of thing, instead of people buying locally to where we actually see those, those sales tax dollars. I think if we can develop retail, that'll help that, and I think that as we approach these types of issues, dealing with the taxpayers' money, we have to have some fiscally sound, we have to have some responsible, effective use of those dollars.
Thank you. Lee, the next question, I'll start with you. Recently, the return of Boot Fest was announced to Victoria. Is this something the city should be involved in or not? And why?
Well, to be honest with you, I don't have the data on the, on the revenue and all that when it comes to Boot Fest, but there are alternatives, you know. I think last week, or two weeks ago was Memorial Bash Day, they had an event, Frank Salazar put that on. Seems to be that it was very successful. I'm not sure that if, maybe that's something that city should be taking on, maybe we should outsource something like that. But again, I would need to be able to sit down and take a look at all the data. I don't have that information at this time.
Chad, should the city be involved in Boot Fest or similar activities or not and why?
I'm not a fan of the city being in the entertainment business, and I'm not a fan of Boot Fest for that reason. I like more support going to our nonprofits. We have several nonprofits here in town that do an amazing job of enriching the environment that we have through the arts. We have the Victoria Symphony, the Victoria Ballet, the Victoria Fine Arts Association, Victoria Theater, Michael Tier does a great job there. Anytime that the city goes out and solicits contributions to try to make an event happen like Boot Fest, it dilutes the power of the same corporate donors that could be giving like Boot Fest, it dilutes the power of the same corporate donors that could be giving to these other nonprofit organizations that we have here in town. And further, we have private promoters, like Lee said, that can come in and actually help put these events on for us, if we focus and set on having a place for them to actually have concerts.
Joe, recently, it was announced that Boot Fest will return. Is Boot Fest or similar activities and events something the city should be involved in? Why or why not?
I don't believe they should be, because I'll draw on a past experience of knowing somebody who could have saved the city thousands of dollars on porta-potties when it came to Boot Fest, but the city seems to have a pattern of wanting to award exclusive rights to services to, you know, only one company. So I believe the city loses a lot of money, and we're not making money on Boot Fest with the city being involved in it like we could. This should be a big moneymaker for Victoria. You know, it should be a profitable thing to offer entertainment for citizens and also make a profit off of it. So I'm not a big fan of, but I'm also a big fan of small government, so I think the least things that government entities are involved in is for the better, because it offers more freedom for citizens to do things that are, that are more profitable.
Thank you. Aaron, are you in favor of the city being involved in the funding of events like Boot Fest? Why or why not?
Well, I think to a certain extent, the city should be involved in activities like Boot Fest. I myself don't necessarily agree with Boot Fest. I know that over the past few years, it hasn't been as successful as we would have liked. And I think that that needs to be evaluated. You know, we need to look at, if we're going to have an event similar to Boot Fest, is it going to be successful? And how can we use the money that we're spending on Boot Fest to help benefit our local organizations? That maybe we put on an event that, you know, sponsors them and endorses our local nonprofits, as Chad said, so that, you know, we have that internal growth and success, instead of having a festival like Boot Fest where we're wasting money. And it's, it's, it seems like a good idea at the time, and we have a good, you know, weekend, but when you look at it long term, it doesn't do anything for the city's growth.
Thank you. Dwayne, Boot Fest was recently announced to return this year. Is Boot Fest or a similar event something the city should be involved in, funding? Why or why not?
Gotcha. You know, I mentioned essential functions of local government earlier. That's not to rule out that there should be some other functions of government, and I think livability is a big part of what local government can help a community and help bolster a community. The more livable your community is, the better it looks to potential economic companies or economic growth, economic development, it helps that. Boot Fest specifically is a challenge, and I think it's a challenge because it's hard to make revenue when you don't have a gate. Okay? Maybe it's a venue question, maybe we can have the same event, but spread out the venue, do something that we could actually draw revenue on. In looking at Boot Fest, I think one of our biggest costs from a city standpoint is overtime for our city employees to actually put on Boot Fest, work vendors booths, that sort of thing. Chad mentioned nonprofits, and my thinking on that is, this is an opportunity for the, for citizens, nonprofits, and the city to come together. Nonprofits can assist with putting on Boot Fest and reap some of the benefits of that financially, take some of the burden, expense burden off of the city.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Those are all the questions that we have, so we'll start with Dwayne, and you have one minute for closing remarks. Dwayne?
Okay. Again, I thank you guys for providing this platform, and I appreciate the opportunity to reach out and speak to the voters. You know, what I want to say to the voters is essentially, I'm a history guy, and I fall back on, I've always thought that Winston Churchill was a very interesting political character. He's the ultimate never say die, never give up guy. He's famously quoted, when he was running for parliament, as saying, "I have nothing to offer but blood, toil, tears, and sweat." I'm making that same offer to District Three. I'm committed to providing strong, effective, fiscally conservative leadership to Victoria as your representative on city council, and I'm asking for your vote in this election.
Thank you. Aaron, one minute for closing remarks.
Thank you. I just want to thank Shaw Realty and Lone Star News Network for hosting. Thank you so much for moderating this debate as well. This was, I think, a huge success in getting our voice across and our message to our constituents, which is extremely important. Like I said during the debate, communication is going to be key, and I hope to do that as a council member. I hope that you all can see me as a viable candidate, and I look forward to Election Day. And I want to thank all of my fellow candidates for being here tonight. And again, I'm a dedicated individual, ready to serve the city of Victoria, and I hope to be your next council member for District Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, one minute for closing remarks.
All righty. Well, like everybody else, thank everybody, and keep that short. But like I said in my opening remarks, you know, I'm fourth generation here in Victoria, my family's here, I'm raising my kids here. I have a lot invested in this community as far as my life and my future. My whole family's here, so everything I do is out of good-heartedness for this community. And like I said before, I'm very fiscally conservative, and I'm very pro-freedom. And I believe if Victoria could with some things, if we could make it to where we allow the citizens and the private business owners here to just prosper without any strings attached, not a lot of restrictions, and just allow them to be prosperous, it would surprise you on what the people of Victoria might end up doing. And a vote for me is a vote for, you know, more freedom and more respect for your tax dollars.
Thank you. Lee, one minute for closing remarks.
Like I said, I'm running this campaign on three principles: experience, committed, and honesty. And the only way that I can continue this is, is by working with the folks in District Three and being out in the field, talking to those folks, and making, understanding what are the needs. Like I said, I've got a lot of years of experience in the industry and in the chemical industry and in the city's private sector. I just ask, humbly ask that you come out and vote for me. I appreciate it.
Chad, one minute, closing remarks.
Thank you to all the candidates for being here to share with our constituents again everything that you had to say tonight, and to our sponsors, and Ash for moderating. Thank you to everybody that tuned in tonight. It's important that we tune in and we try to get involved. One of the key components of our campaign is reaching out, trying to be that bridge, to try to get people involved, and trying to communicate what's actually going on great in the city with our constituents and working back and forth. The city cannot do it all by itself. We have to jump in, we have to help out. As a business leader myself, I wanted to run because I think that our constituents deserve to have somebody that has experience in creating jobs here in Victoria, somebody who's hired people who live here in Victoria. So if you live in District Three, I'd ask that you visit our website. We have the Heart of a Teacher, and we have several videos out there that are talking about different components on why we're running our campaign and things with the city in two and a half to five-minute increments. If you live in District Three, I would be honored to have your vote, and I'd like to ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for taking part in the forum today for special election. Good luck in the election on July 3rd, and appreciate you being here this evening. We're going to turn things over to Caleb and Tara. Thank you.
All right, guys, and welcome back. Great job to all the city council candidates. And first and foremost, I want to apologize for the technical glitches. We run this full HD video, and sometimes the internet doesn't like it very much, so it bogs down a little bit, but we will be reposting this video once this is over, so it should take care of any choppiness that you're experiencing right now. On that note, I am joining with my co-host, Ms. Tara Gonzalez. How are you, ma'am?
I'm doing well.
Good, good. Well, I like the fact that, you know, it's been a headache, because there's been a lot of work behind the scenes, but I do like the fact that we have five candidates running for council right now, because to me, you know, in a town where we historically have low voting and stuff like that, it's pretty exciting to see five people toss their hat in the ring. What do you, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I think it's exciting and energizing to see people so passionate about Victoria and making it better, and just seeing us step up as a community and get involved and more involved in our community.
Yes, ma'am. And make sure you stay tuned, because we are setting the stage right now for the mayoral race. We've got three candidates in that one, they're getting the stage set. We've got the ABCs running for mayor there, Emmett Alvarez, Jeff Bocknight, and David Crook. I'm excited for this one. You know, I, I think it's neat that we go from five to three. You know, this is a special election since we lost Mayor Rowley, you know, so it'll be kind of neat to see how this all shakes out.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to hearing what the candidates have to say, and my encouragement to my fellow Victorians would be to just really listen to the voices. Each person has a unique perspective, so listen in, tune in to what they're saying, and vote according to your beliefs.
That's, that's great advice. And another thing to keep in mind, too, is, we have sat down and we filmed eight, or we filmed interviews with every single candidate that's running, both on city council and the mayoral side. So we've got eight candidate interviews that, starting tomorrow at 6:00 PM, we will be releasing one at a time on Meet Victoria and Lone Star News Network. So again, you can watch this, we will release one video, one candidate video a day, starting at 6:00 PM. We'll start with the mayoral candidates, and again, this is tomorrow. At 6:00 PM, we'll run through the three mayoral candidates, so each get their own day, and then we will start on the city council. So that'll be eight sets of candidate interviews that will take you right up to the day before early voting. So that way, in addition to the debate, you can actually get a chance to hear these gentlemen sit down in a more relaxed environment, one-on-one, and deal with all my crazy questions and try to keep them on their toes a little bit. Have you got some behind the scenes? Do you get to see any of those videos yet? I mean, did I do awesome, or did I just talk way too much, as I usually do?
You always do awesome, Caleb. I'm sure you did. Unfortunately, I haven't gotten to see the behind the scenes yet, but I know that, I know they're going to be great, and I just encourage everybody to get involved and tune in.
And once again, that will be on Lone Star News Network and Meet Victoria with Caleb Shaw, starting tomorrow, 6:00 PM. We will be one of the mayoral candidates, I'll let you know it, you'll find out at 6:00 PM. Man, I was excited, you know. We've got a wide range of candidates that ran for council, from, from younger to older, with bringing all sorts of different experiences to the table. I feel like somehow we might end up heading for a runoff, you know, they, because for those that don't know, you've got to, because of the circumstances, one vote, one candidate has to win fifty percent plus one vote. So it'll be interesting, because we've got so many great candidates, I just don't know how that vote's going to shake out.
Yeah, they're, they're all super passionate and, I mean, definitely have different skillsets that are assets to our community, so yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be tough.
Yes, ma'am. And I want to thank the public and everybody for tuning in on this. I, several of my buddies and different people let me know that we had the choppiness on the video, so once again, just an apology for that, but you know, want to make sure you tune in, because if it is too choppy and it just bothered you, we will be reposting this. So you should get a clean video on the second one and all that. But again, we appreciate you tuning in, giving these, these candidates, you know, an opportunity to, to, to share with us and really get to know them, you know, because I, it's such an intrusion and such a, you know, time away from their families and all of that. I mean, I'm glad it's them and not me.
Yes, I agree.
And so, yes, ma'am. So we're running, let me, let me do a quick little sound check, our little test, see where we're at. We, this is where I act real official, if I had an earpiece, I'd hold it in here. We, we about ready to go? All right, guys, so if everybody will take their seat and viewers get ready, we are about to switch it over to start the mayoral candidate for City of Victoria, featuring David Crook, Emmett Alvarez, and Jeff Bocknight. Ash, it's back to you, my brother, take it away.
Thank you, Caleb, thank you, Tara. Gentlemen, good evening, welcome, good luck in the race for mayor. Our candidates tonight are David Crook, Emmett Alvarez, and Jeff Bocknight. Each of you will have two minutes for opening remarks. After opening remarks, I have a series of questions that will be asked of each candidate. You'll have ninety seconds to respond, you'll each respond to the same question. There may be a rebuttal if you directly include one of your candidates in the response. They will have an opportunity to rebut if necessary. Ashton is our timer, she will let you know when there is thirty seconds left, when there is fifteen seconds left, and when time is up after the ninety seconds for each question. As a courtesy, please try to not respond beyond the ninety seconds, so that each candidate will have the same amount of time to answer questions. Following the series of questions, each of you will then have a minute for closing remarks. So with that, if there are no questions, we'll get started, beginning with David Crook, if you would, please.
Good evening.
Opening remarks. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Crook, I'm running for Victoria's mayor. A lot of people know that I don't have experiences, my other competitors do, in running. I don't think of that as a dis, you know, a disservice to myself. I think I can bring in new, new ways of thinking. I was in the military for eight years before getting injured. I've been working with the Victoria Bad News Chairs, it's an adapted sports nonprofit. Shoot, just before I was here, I was actually in the Southside Community Center Coalition meeting. So I've been trying to get out and help the community the best I can. As mayor, I would really like to beat a dead horse, work on our infrastructure, our roads. Also, I think we need to work on, as a city, of incentivizing to bring in more businesses into our community. So, and with that, I'm pretty short and sweet.
I'm sure our viewers appreciate it. Emmett, opening remarks, please.
Thank you, Wade. Good evening, Victorians. You know, we've gotten to this point, unfortunately, regretfully, with the loss of our mayor, former mayor, but I think the blueprint for Victoria's future was cast by our former mayor. In this special election, Victorians will make a choice on a hands-on mayor, and I plan to be that working mayor that you can call 24/7. Call me at 218-9464 has been one of my cries in this campaign. That will be devoted to Victorians. You can call me to address your streets, your potholes, or hear about your property tax and property appraisal concerns and other issues you may have. The welfare, health, and safety of our citizens must be at the forefront. We need to work together for a better and smarter city government that exceeds our expectations. The time to move forward and towards Saturday, July 3rd, Election Day. Your vote and support will make my campaign for mayor and working for you a reality. We have a lot of work to do, a lot of work is in progress. I recognize one thing, after serving on city council for a number of years, that a lot of change is afoot, and there are important decisions that are going to be made in the future, including these thoroughfare, the thoroughfare master plan, the drainage master plan, the parks master plan, all things in the works that we need to participate in. I believe there, the city's even having a sidewalk discussion right now, or it's on, it's going to be this week, I forget what date. So, so many other attempts that are being made to improve Victoria, and I hope to lead that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmett. Jeff, two minutes for opening remarks.
Howdy. My name's Jeff Bocknight. Thank you to Caleb Shaw for hosting this debate, and to Ash Wallachow for moderating. And also, a special shout out to Bill Winlet for letting us use this beautiful room. If you haven't seen it, hopefully you'll get to sometime soon. I was raised in Victoria and graduated from Victoria College, Victoria High School. I did attend Victoria College, but then went off to college earning a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Engineering in Mechanical Engineering from Texas A&amp;M University. I am married to the most wonderful woman, Jay Lynn, and we have two phenomenal daughters, Emily and Abby. We returned to Victoria in 2004 and started a mechanical contracting business based out of Victoria. I was first elected to city council in 2013, after serving as the chairman of the city's planning commission. Since moving back to Victoria, I've also participated in numerous nonprofit boards, such as the Victoria Symphony, Midcoast Construction Academy, and the Nazareth Academy Advisory Board, just to name a few. I believe in Victoria now and in what we envision for her future. I see a future full of new businesses, a growth of existing businesses, and an influx of exciting and new citizens to fill the jobs that we can create. I see a Victoria that continues working as one community to accomplish our goals across the entire city. I'm honored to be on the ballot for the mayor of Victoria and would appreciate your vote in the upcoming election.
Thank you. David, we'll start with you for the first question. As Emmett alluded to, this is a special election to fill the term of our late mayor, Rowley McCoy. So if you're elected mayor, do you continue with his vision, or do you have your own vision as mayor?
So, with the previous mayor, I've only heard great things of him as a person. As the direction of Victoria, I disagree, though. Since coming here, and we moved here in 2014, and from since then, I've only seen a decline in work, you know, jobs, you know. We were at oil, we predominantly, we had a lot of oil and gas jobs, but since those left, we haven't figured out a way to replace those with some other industry. So we need to do something, because right now, our most employment is either, if you want a decent-paying job right now, it's going to be in the medical field at some point. So I think we need to work on some other forms of industry, because like some of the district candidates were saying, you know, we have highways, we have an airport, which is a valuable asset, we even have docks, you know, at the Port of Victoria. So I think our big thing is, you know, we, I know everyone wants to say they want to keep going on the same direction, but I don't think that's working for Victoria. If, you know, on my side of town, I can drive down, I can see a whole bunch of vacant buildings, and I want to see those filled with businesses and with that, jobs. buildings, and I want to see those filled with businesses and with that, jobs.
Thank you. Emmett?
Well, I think we are we are on track. And with that leadership of of our former mayor, McCoy, and the council, and working with the new city manager, I see a lot of changes going on at city hall. I'm very proud of the fact that the of those changes, and I think that we need to keep on that same track. Oh, will there be some changes if I get elected mayor? Absolutely. We want to address some other issues as well. I'm a little concerned that we have not resolved the Ben Wilson project, which is basically the streets there at the university and what's the hang up there and what continue. That project was on cue for when I was on council. And here we are, three, four, five years later, and it still has not been resolved. And I'm a little concerned about that. That's our future. That's where the growth is going to come from, is our academics, our university system here as it grows and produces talent, students, graduates. That will be our future workforce that we can market outside of Victoria. And we need to continue on that track of making the university feel at home and the investments that they are putting into our community, not only in in the job creation through faculty and staff, but also the attraction of more and more students. And we need to be focusing on that more, I believe. And that would be something that I would like to spend a lot of time making sure that happens.
Thank you. Jeff, this is a special election to fill late mayor Raleigh McCoy's term. If elected mayor, do you continue with his vision or do you have your own for Victoria?
Well, Raleigh McCoy was a good friend, a good mentor, and an excellent mayor. I can't believe how fast he jumped in and was to be effective right away. He came up with a lot of good ideas and got all the boards underneath them aligned. And we're all pulling and pushing in the same direction. And we all believe in the same future for Victoria. We always had some disagreements as, you know, people are going to not always agree on things, and we don't always on council, and I didn't always agree with Mayor McCoy. But on the big picture stuff, we agreed 100%. We visited every other day, and I see myself very much following the direction that he had kind of set forth for us. I kind of felt the duty as a sitting city council member that that we needed to carry that forward, and someone from city council needed to step up and run for mayor. As far as issues like the Ben Wilson corridor, that's a UHV project. They're responsible for the design of it. They have yet to complete their design. Once the design's completed, they will transfer the money to the City of Victoria so it can be managed, the construction can be managed by the City of Victoria. But the holdups right now with the university getting their design completed.
Thank you.
Can I rebut that?
Sure.
Why has it taken it so long, Jeff? That project has been on the queue when I was on council, and that's been quite a few years I've been off council.
It's been approved by the city council. The contract took forever to work out with the University of Houston, Victoria, sat in their law office for a long time. And now they still they just came back a couple months ago with some design changes.
Wow. And you know, you watch them build buildings here in this town pretty quick, and they can't build a road or get a design for a road built. So I kind of wonder what's going on.
Can I chime in? As someone that I I live right next between Ben Jordan and Ben Wilson, that corridor and when they had those meetings for us to come out, they didn't actually listen to the people that live there, how we said, this isn't a good idea. Myself and another, my neighbors, we both worked for Tech dot at the time, and he still does as inspectors. And we tried to point out that the travel, how many vehicles were going across that road daily, has increased to the point where it's not feasible to reduce it to make that corridor. But, you know, they didn't really listen to the people, which and and that's kind of one of the things I'm running on is, you know, we need to start listening to the people.
Thank you. Emmett, this next question, round of questions, we'll start with you. What do you feel are the two biggest priorities that you will face if elected mayor?
Well, you know, we're going to hit hit the ground running. My priorities, of course, during the summer is when they work on the budget. So a lot of the future projects for the next fiscal year are going to almost be set going forward with very little time to spend on that. But I tell you what, that tax rate is critical. And everything I've seen since I've left council is the tax rate keeps going up. And, you know, it begs the question, you know, even with appraisal values going up, yet the city has continued to raise taxes on us. So that's a priority to take a hard look at. The same issue that I ran the first time and the second time and the third time and the fourth time. Why is it that we can't fix a pothole that stays fixed for at least one year? You know, why is it that every time we get a rain, we've get it, we get the same potholes and then more? And I believe, and I've seen systems that we could employ to to fix these potholes, maybe not permanently, but at least get our money's worth, get them fixed, and they'll stay fixed for a while. So that would be two of the issues that will certainly continue to to burn as far as my leadership in addressing those potholes and that tax rate, given the appraisal values and what's going on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, what do you see as the two biggest priorities that you would face if elected mayor?
The two biggest might be the management of the capital improvements projects plan. We have a bunch of debt capacity coming up in the next few years, and we have been working over the last two years, maybe three years, to take a good look at it and decide as a council how we want to manage that debt capacity when it comes in and how we use it to fix roads and other infrastructure needs. And doing so in a responsible manner so we don't lump it all on the citizens at one time, and then we don't have any future capacity down the road for other councils. So we're doing it in a in a very detailed manner, and I'd continue doing that. The second one is regional economic development, working with our surrounding counties to promote the golden crescent, if you will, as a place to come set your business. We have a deep water port in Calhoun. There's no reason we shouldn't have some type of agreement to promote that with them as well as our shallow water port. We have the airport in Victoria. There's great resources in Goliad and Cuero and La Vaca Counties as well as Jackson. And I think by doing that, the entire area can be raised as far as job creation and standard of living. And that's that would be another big priority that I would like to work on.
Thank you. David, what do you see as the two biggest priorities that you will face if elected mayor?
I agree with both my competitors on roads and infrastructure. You know, a lot of people, you see the pothole, you know, we want it fixed. What we need to do, though, is we need to figure out, coming from a tech stop, we need to know what's underneath. You know, we have those aging pipes that are breaking, and when they break, then we have to dig up the road, then you have to, they patch it. Instead of patching it, I say, you know, why not, instead of patching a 30-year-old pipe, just dig out that 100-foot, replace the whole section so we won't have to worry about it, and then it will give you a bigger patch, will give you a better ride quality instead of a 20-foot patch or a 40-foot patch, you know. And like Mr. Bocknight was saying, we need to work on jobs. The state unemployment rate right now is at 6.7%. Victoria, we're at 7, you know. So we, as a community, we need to work on, like I said, bringing in those businesses, bringing in those jobs that are going to pay our people.
Well, you all mentioned this, so I'll jump around in the questions a little bit, but streets have been a bone of contention as long as I've lived here, as long as you all have lived here. Jeff, we'll start with you. What progress has been made, if any, and how do you make more progress with the streets?
You loaded that one up with the if any there. I think we've made progress. It's not near what we need to make, but we are hampered by the amount of money we have to spend on it. During the pandemic last year, when it came time to, you know, assess where we're going to be with our budget, we decided to delay a number of projects. We're going to pick them back up this year. So we're going to have $8 million worth of projects going on in this next budget calendar year is what it looks like. And some of these things are just downright expensive. Tanglewood, Mrs. Scott's been working on that since she's gotten on council, and no one denies that those roads need to be fixed, but we had to wait for utility revenue to finish the underground or to have the money to do the undergrounds. And that project's way over $20 million just to build one neighborhood. We don't have that type of revenue to go fix that. And there's many other neighborhoods throughout the city that are in the same shape or worse. And so we have to judiciously look at the roads, their conditions, and use our money most effectively. Sometimes the project fits into the the budget year that we have, and sometimes you have to slip it to another year. And it's a very delicate balance, and it's not an easy choice when we're up there for any of us to make a decision on. But that's why we're up there, and we do it as best as we can.
Thank you. Emmett, what progress has been made on the streets, if any, and how do you make more progress as mayor?
Well, I'm proud of Red River. We finally got that done. I don't know how long it took. I know when I first ran, you know, that 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 section to the park was Craterville, and that got fixed, thank God. And then the rest of Red River is looks like to be complete. But it's also very important that any roads that we do build or rebuild, the maintenance is critical. And right now, and at the time, when I was on council, we we had zeroed out that that budget. And I know that I fought that fought for increasing it or putting it back on in the budget, that maintenance, the crack ceiling, and other things that we do to maintain our new streets so they can last 30 years. As as it was alluded, debt capacity is going to be an issue in the future where we will have more debt capacity. I I believe strongly that we go to the voters in the near future and put up put forth a respectable bond issue and, more importantly, tell them what we're going to do with it and where we're going to put it. Tanglewood, you know, is another good example because I live in a in a subdivision called North Heights, and every year, the city is budgeting street by street from Red River to to Rio Grande, between Laurent and Navarro, to rebuild that neighborhood. Why haven't we done the same thing with Tanglewood? No, you can't spend money all at one time. You don't have it. Phase it, and I think that's what should be done for Tanglewood. Thank you.
David, the streets have been a bone of contention for residents of Victoria for a long time. So what progress has been made, if any, and how do you make more progress if you're elected mayor?
Well, I know people aren't crazy about the whole Navarro median, but it has, if you go down at night, it is a lot more well-lit, which makes it a safety, and that's why it was installed. I know some people call it U-turn avenue now and things like that. But so but I want to just keep addressing, you know, we we need to look at the budget like everyone everyone agrees on is, you know, you only have a certain amount of money to use, and we need to dis disperse it throughout the whole city. The one thing I would like to work on with the city, the city council and everyone else, is also looking to see about grants. That's another thing, there's always money somewhere. People always like to hand out money if you're willing to ask for it, giving it to a good cause. And why not, you know, fill out those grant forms to see if we can get it from Uncle Sam? Why not? It's better than, you know, asking the people for it.
I've got a quick rebuttal. I want people to understand, when I was talking about debt capacity that's available, it does it means that we do not have to go back out to the voters. We can do it within our current tax rate structure. It is not going to be some bond issue that's going to be on an election. It's that we're paying off bonds early and working down our debt and have the extra capacity in that tax rate. And also, we have a grant administrator. She was hired this last year. She's doing a phenomenal job. Grants don't happen quickly. They take a long time to come to fruition, but she's secured us quite a few already and very proud of her and proud of that hire that Jesus made.
Can I have a second to rebut that? You know, that's been my concern all along, that the city council takes upon themselves to issue certificates of obligation and pick the projects they so desire. I think the voters are entitled. It's their money, and we ought to put forth an honest list of projects that they can agree to and take it to the voters, for heaven's sakes. You know, we can continue to do the certificates of obligation, obviously, but, you know, I get a lot of grief about that, and I personally don't feel good about that. I want the voters to know what we're doing. I want us to put out a plan of the streets and other projects and amount. We may not have to raise taxes. That would be a beautiful thing. I think we probably don't have to. But let's be honest with with the voters and tell them what we're doing and give them consideration to to vote on it and say, yeah, we agree with you, or no, we don't agree with you. Thank you.
And I don't like the impression that the city's not being honest with the voters when it comes to spending money on roads. There's a five-year look ahead for capital improvement projects. It's on the website. It's posted. We go through it every spring. We talk about it again in the summer. We continually work that. We have a CIP manager now to work all those projects, and they are out there. And we always, always welcome citizens' input into that process. And that's what we're there for as council members, to take their input and represent the people when we make those discussions on the dais.
You could ask, you know, certain projects that have been on the list for years and years and get get pushed back. And Tanglewood has taken for so long, you know, decades now, and gets pushed back. You know, there's been promises made by future councils to do projects on that CIP list, and when it's time, it's their turn, it drops back down to the bottom, Jeff. So again, I think we need a mandate from the voters.
So that's that's not always the case. So we had Vine Street scheduled a couple of years ago, and Crestwood was coming up. They were going to start from Main to Navarro, which is the best section of Crestwood. Ms. Solis was correct. She brought up that we should really be starting at the other end, and we all agreed because I don't think that end was going to last much longer. That ate into the amount of money that was available because it cost more than the first section they had laid out, so Vine had to slip down the list. And that's the type of adult decisions that have to be made up there when it comes to doing the CIP.
Well, and apparently the the residents on on that street weren't too happy. They've been complaining about those sidewalks and what the city ultimately built there. And now y'all are going to go back and tear that up possibly and waste a bunch of money, you know, to satisfy the voters and those citizens that live there. And for some reason, you know, they input was either forsaken or not given opportunity to to chime in back during the public hearings, or maybe there was a public meeting, but apparently they weren't aware. And now now they're aware, and they're not happy with that project and how it's impacted their their neighborhood there. So again, I think we ought to solicit more input from our citizens.
So I freely admit that the city could have done a better job on the front end, talking with those citizens, but that project was also in front of council, and we've had this discussion with them. It's kind of a two-way street. We need citizen participation. We welcome it. We can make better decisions with it. The city should have gone out and talked to them beforehand during that on that section. There's a whole bunch of miscommunication from 1960 forward about what that road was intended for. The city has gone out now for the second phase, the middle section of Crestwood, and had a a meeting with all the residents that are along that and the businesses. And we'll 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 improve, but and we're not tearing up anything, costing a bunch of money. It is going to cost a little bit more to re-stripe it, but we came to a good compromise that they all agreed to and voted on and wish to see it go in that direction. I think the city was proper in responding to them.
Thank you. We're going to switch gears here, and I'll start with David. We seem to be on the backside of the COVID pandemic. From your perspective, what lessons did we learn as a city and what mistakes might have been made?
Oh, man, I'm probably the worst one to ask that question. I'll be honest with you. That's a that's a that's a good one for me, I guess. You know, I I understand we're coming out of it, and it was a virus, and I think there was a lot of, we kind of had that knee-jerk reaction personally when it first happened. You know, we had a couple cases here, and I'm talking nationally, sorry. But with the me personally, I'm like, with a 99% chance, I'll take my chance, you know, unless you have an underlying health condition, then I can see the risk, and you need to take your precautions. need to take your precautions. With all the mask mandates, things like that, I support businesses if they want people to wear their mask in their businesses still, you know, that's your choice. It's also my choice as a customer to shop somewhere else that I don't have to wear the mask. So I know my choice on the whole COVID thing isn't the most favorite, but that is mine and I'll tell you the truth.
Emmett, now that we seem to be on the backside of the COVID pandemic, what lessons were learned? What mistakes were made?
Well, not being that directly involved, I think our health department, our mayor, our county judge, our health officials, Dr. McNeil, they did a very good job of representing the interest here and giving us good information, as best that was known. Could they have, what else could they have done? We saw it coming. We got prepared. We followed, whether it was state orders or local orders, I think our citizens were good to respond to those requests. So we may have saved a lot of lives because of the efforts of our county and local government, city government and so forth by heeding their call and having that, those briefings on television were excellent. I couldn't have thought of a better idea. And now what's, what lessons are bad, I don't know what mistakes were made. I'm not going to dwell on that because I really don't know, but I tell you what mistake we can't make is this COVID money that's coming in at a tune of about fourteen million dollars. We cannot spend that money willy-nilly without making sure that we're complying with state and federal requirements because they won't give us, they won't reimburse us. We go off and do some things that are unnecessary or will not be eligible. So we have to be very careful how we spend that money. Thank you.
Jeff, now that we're seen to be on the backside of the COVID pandemic, what lessons were learned and what mistakes were made?
I've been sitting in a few of the policy meetings and we haven't gone through a formal lessons learned, so this will be my own take on it. Mistake wise, I didn't like the way that the city did their emergency declarations. The way I read and interpret that law, the city council should every seven days vote to keep it in place. Just as the governor, he has his own power to vote his in every thirty days, but that's the max they can last. And we were going on indefinitely and we didn't have any orders. Mayor McCoy and I disagreed on it, but we came to a compromise that seemed to work. And then once we didn't have any orders for a while, he agreed that we don't need an emergency declaration. It's not meant to be easy to have that much power in the county judge and the mayor during an emergency. And I think that meeting once a week as council to reaffirm that emergency declaration is not convenient, but it's not supposed to be convenient. You're not supposed to congregate that much power. Also didn't like that we kept the mask mandates so long in the City of Victoria buildings. I was working to get that removed a lot sooner following the state capitol and the county courthouses. And we got that done before the governor took out the mask mandates. Good, community communication with press conferences was fantastic. And while the vaccine clinic started off kind of shaky, it became a model for the state and National Guard was coming down here to see how we were doing it so that they could push it out to other entities in the state. EOC policy group spoke with one voice and we have fantastic medical professionals in this community that worked tirelessly to make sure we all got through that pandemic and when the hospitals got overcrowded, they were there to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Emmett, this next question, we'll start with you. Why is, you know, there's been a lot of talk about downtown revitalization and trying to get people downtown and businesses downtown. Why is downtown revitalization important to all of Victoria?
It's one of the oldest historic districts we have in Texas. It was founded, and you know, the city was established in eighteen twenty-four and it was founded by Martin de Leon even before that. Historically speaking, we're one of the oldest cities in Texas and that downtown district is one of the oldest. Do we preserve it or would we allow it to fall into total disrepair? I don't think so. I think we do have to have a commitment. Now, some of the programs to do that may be a little bit suspect and some folks are kind of begrudging that, those grants that are being made available and so forth. But I will say that the city has made a significant investment. Unfortunately, you can't see it in the downtown because a lot of it's underground. The water, pipe replacement and drainage and all of those good things that have been done to the tune of two hundred plus million dollars to make all those improvements. So we've got significant investment. Now, if I'm not mistaken, in years past, there was either an attempt to or at least a discussion about the tax increment finance district. They would basically create the downtown as a district that could increase their tax rate to a few pennies and use that to do additional improvements, whether it's facades or other, whatever the tax increment district would allow. But that would be that district to make that decision. So it's something to explore and if it's there, let's get it, jumpstart it again.
Thank you. David, with all the talk about downtown revitalization, why is revitalizing downtown important to all of Victoria?
Like Mr. Alvarez was saying, Victoria is one of the oldest continued occupied cities in the state. And I do believe, you know, we should preserve our past and things like that. I also think, you know, if it's that historic, why don't we try to get state funding to maintain these buildings and make them a historical building instead of paying for it for the state, just, you know. I grew up in a small town. I like the small town feel of coming downtown, but downtown's not our shopping center, you know? Most of our money is going to be coming from District Three, like they were saying earlier, from shopping and visiting, most of the entertainment is there on Navarro. It's not downtown sadly. Unless we start investing and getting other businesses down there that are tourist-based, I don't see how we can keep it, you know, justifying, paying for it when it's someone else's building, you know? I would love for someone to pay for my house, but you know, if it's not going to happen, so.
Jeff, a lot of talk about downtown revitalization. Why is downtown revitalization important to all of Victoria?
Well, it's the heartbeat of the city. It's where the city started. I think it's important that we preserve that heritage and especially as we're coming up to celebrate our two-hundred-year celebration in twenty twenty-four. It's going to be here before we know it. We'll start working on that here soon because I think there's some big ideas that we have that are just going to take a while so we can celebrate that. And I can imagine a lot of that celebration in downtown Victoria. We've talked about already over the last couple of months, making an entertainment district for downtown and define that area as well as making it an arts district. And then also TIFs or TIRS, where you do get the incremental property taxes, when you get higher appraised values, they stay within that district to be used for improvements. And the TIRS can be set up in a multitude of ways and for a number of different years, but it's something that we've already been discussing and just trying to build a consensus and make sure everybody understands it on the council so that we can take it to the area that would be affected and see if they would agree with it.
Thank you. David, we'll start the next question off with you. The border crisis is being felt in Victoria. We heard a little bit in the council district race about some of the impacts with bailouts. Our law enforcement is being pulled in different directions. What role do you see as mayor or does, would the mayor of Victoria play in fixing the problems that are coming with our immigration crisis?
As a mayor, there's no way to really fix that, you know, as, by the time they're getting to us in Victoria, we're hundreds of miles from the border, you know? So I think that would come up to the state and federal government. They need to step up and crack down a little more. I have friends in Border Patrol and they do their checkpoints. They do, they have things, there's things they're not allowed to use technology-wise because it's, their hands are tied, they're just not allowed to use it yet, you know, like drones, things like that. You'll see news people, they'll have a drone over and they, you can watch the people running, but you know, Border Patrol, not allowed to use it. All I could do is say I'm one hundred percent behind our Border Patrol and our sheriffs and our police officers and I'll do whatever they need to help, you know, so.
Thank you. Emmett, you know, we've seen the reports of bailouts in the area and the strain that that puts on our area law enforcement. So what role, if any, would you, if elected as mayor, have in helping to fix that problem?
I think it's a significant role because we have to ensure that our police department has the assets and equipment necessary. I think that when called upon, if the sheriff out in the county needs assistance, there needs to be an agreement that we will be there for them. There's also the possibility that those bailouts will occur in the city, in our neighborhoods and so forth. So again, yes, we've got to be very proactive in being able to address future issues like that. And if they're happening in the county, we're pretty sure it's going to happen in the city. And regardless, the sheriff's department, the police department, all local law enforcement, other law enforcement, I think they all need to be on the same page. Any additional resources necessary, you know, while ICE and the feds may not be able to use drones, why can't we? Why can't the city use drones? Why can't the county sheriff use drones, especially out there in some of the wooded, dangerous areas where these people bail out into? So maybe we make available the drone resources to the county or vice versa and be able to track these people as they're, you know, spreading out into the ranches, the farms. We've got a lot of rural development out there, a lot of housing going on in Victoria as well in the city. So I think we need to use every resource at our disposal and I think the mayor needs to stand firm in supporting our local law enforcement.
Jeff, what role, if any, of your elected mayor would you play in helping to fix the immigration crisis in Victoria or as it affects Victoria?
Well, I would continue to support Chief Aradondo for his joint task force that he has with other law enforcement agencies that deal specifically with immigration issues. Recently, we had a conversation that we'd done a study a number of years ago, looking at the size of our police force, knowing that we can't just squeeze in the budget and other ten officers or whatever, but we wanted to know based on call volume and area and response time, how many we needed to grow the department. And I think we've reached that goal now. And I've asked that we start looking at another study to understand where we need to be with the number of officers to properly respond to any call, whether they be immigration or a traffic call. But I certainly support them and all their work that they do with the sheriff's department. I know he and Sheriff Mar work very well together and I just continue all the support that I can as mayor.
Thank you. Jeff, I'll come back with you to start this next question. The last ten years or so, the state of Texas has seen significant growth in population. Victoria's population about three times as small in that timeframe. Or to phrase it another way, Victoria's population has grown about six percent in the last ten years. The state of Texas has grown anywhere from sixteen to eighteen percent, depending on who's telling you which numbers. Some would say that Victoria failed to capitalize on that growth and momentum. The good news though, Texas is predicted to continue to lead the nation in population growth. So how is, if you were elected mayor, would you allow Victoria to ride that wave that we may have missed the first time around?
Well, when I get elected mayor, there's going to be a focus, obviously, on economic development, a continued focus. You know, a lot of that growth has happened in the cities and we need to tell a great story about what Victoria is and how wonderful it is to be in this community where there's so many resources that you wouldn't get to participate in if you were in a big city. And I'm talking about Symphony and the nave and the Children's Discovery Museum and our wonderful zoo that you can go have encounters with. We need to tell our story a little bit better. We have such a wonderful community and I think that people, after this pandemic, have realized that maybe the city's not the place to be. You know, we're up here debating each other, but I promise you, everybody here wants the best for Victoria and no matter where you go in town, whether we disagree on things or not, it's all about making Victoria better. And we're a great community to have those discussions because we can disagree because probably on the next issue, we're going to agree. And we got to keep going with that and make sure everybody else understands how fantastic this community is. It's a diverse community and everybody understands that and it's a great melting pot for just Texas in as general, in general terms. And really need to continue doing that and get the word out.
Thank you. David, I'll try to be a little more succinct in the question. The last ten years, Victoria's population has grown six percent. The state's population has grown about three times that. Texas predicted to continue to lead the US in population growth over the next ten years. So what would you do as mayor to attract more people to Victoria and help Victoria grow?
Well, like Mr. Bucknite mentioned, we have a lot of great things to offer in Victoria, but I think, I would disagree, I think those are a lot of things that make you want to visit Victoria, not move your family to Victoria. If you want people to come to Victoria and stay here, you need to offer them jobs, you know? A study came out that Crossroads Today talked about last Wednesday was Victoria, it was a national survey where Victoria was the top ten of job loss in the nation, you know? So we need to bring jobs back to Victoria. That's what's going to bring families, that's what's going to make you want to move here and stay here. Victoria College, they're doing great by offering new trades. They have twelve current programs right now of good-paying trades, but at the end of it, if you earn your certs and everything, if there's no job for you, where are you going to go? You're going to go to Houston, you're going to go San Antonio, Corpus, any of those bigger surrounding areas because, you know, everything is nice and dandy to live here, but you got to pay your bills at the end of the day and to support your family. So I think we need to work on bringing jobs.
Thank you. Emmett?
Well, it's a million-dollar question. It's not a ten-year problem. It's been a problem that even when I got involved with Victoria Economic Development Corporation, when I, my first jobs, when I came back to Victoria sees, we still keep asking the same question almost forty years later. And certainly there, we've had a lot of challenges. We're sitting right in the middle of some major areas and, you know, some of it is about being competitive. We end up finding ourselves competing with other states for big industry relocations and expansions, don't have enough incentives to put on the table. And in a lot of cases, we can't even compete with the bigger cities around us. They've got bigger populations, but how do we address it? I think we're on track. It's going to take a little while. We should have done it quite a long time ago, but with the university expansion and those efforts to bring more and more students to this area, I think that once we continue to develop a higher work, skilled labor supply, it's going to make it much more attractive for industry to want to look at us a little bit more seriously, you know? Or we could do the old model back from World War II days and when the military men came to train at Foster Field or Allo Field, they found their wives here and they decided to stay.
Thank you, Emmett. I'll start the next question with you, Emmett. When surveyed, and I served on Parks Commission years ago, but residents always listed Riverside Park as a top asset for the city. What can or what would you do as mayor to maximize Riverside Park's potential?
Excuse me. Well, I think we're doing it. They've seen a tremendous amount of improvements and we need to make it more people-friendly though. There used to be a time in the, on the weekends, there were thousands and thousands and thousands of people out at the park and not so much anymore because we restricted parking areas. We don't, we don't allow a lot of different things. We limit the ability to have events at the special events area as far as pop numbers. And we need to go back and relook at that and make it more people-friendly. You know, there are certain groups that certainly benefit from the park and not anything against the golfers or the frisbee guys that love to play frisbee and I know we've been doing a very good job accommodating them, but... play frisbee. And I know we've been doing a very good job accommodating them. But I think we need to be more open and allow for the use of the park and break down some of these policies and barriers that the city has put up that limit people down there. And hopefully, we can start taking a hard look at that when I'm mayor. Because again, it used to be a very people-friendly park. And over decades now, it has not, it's become something different. And maybe we need to go back and revisit that. Thank you.
Jeff, Riverside Park always listed as the top asset for the city. If elected mayor, how would you, what would you do or see be done to maximize its potential?
Sure. We just had a joint session with the Parks Commission, the city council did, to go over the Parks Master Plan. That's one of the three parks that we're focusing on. One's, the other one's MLK and Ethel Lee Tracy, and then looking at Riverside. No one was satisfied with the plan that they had developed. It didn't meet or the needs as we understand them as Parks Commissioners and city council members. And so they're going back to the drawing board to revisit all that. We wanted to make it a place that it works for everybody. We do have a premier frisbee golf course in Victoria. And most people probably don't know that. It, it actually was designed by one of the, like, founders of frisbee golf. And it's the third course he ever designed. And people come here to Victoria to specifically play his course. We don't want to lose that. There's other areas that we've opened up. You know, we had the GOAT program out there for a while to get some of the brush out of the way and got access back to Pebble Beach. That's a wonderful location. One of the continued challenges with Riverside Park is it being in the floodplain. And that, that hampers a lot of what we can and can't do structure-wise within the park. But definitely keep trying to push the ball forward. And I look forward to this Parks Master Plan review again when it comes back to us.
David, if you're elected mayor, how would you capitalize and, I guess, maximize the potential of what many view is the best asset for Victoria, and that's Riverside Park?
I agree. Shoot, that's where we had my son's third birthday party a couple months ago, was down at the park. I love going down in the park, me and my family. I think one of the things we could do, I know it's kind of, it's me where, I know we talked about it with the District 3 candidates, but it was like Boot Fest. I know one of them said it's hard to charge something when there's no gates. Well, why don't we put it down there? You know, it's a park, there's a river as a barricade, and you have your entrance. All you have to do, you block off a road, there's parking down there. You know, why don't we try to host events, start doing events down there, you know? So we can have more things and get people out and about. I know, it's a lot of things I've heard from families, is they want more events in Victoria for the family, you know? So.
Similar question to that, that was asked of the council members. And David, I'll start with you. Are you in favor, if you were elected mayor, would you be in favor of the city continuing to fund events like Boot Fest? Or is that a role the city should be playing?
Yeah, I think if anything, the city could be a sponsor, but I don't think the city should be the host, you know? I think that's where the community needs to step up and where we should decide what we want to do. You know, if we, the community wants to do Boot Fest, well, then we need to get together and have these other organizations do it. And if the city wants to say, okay, we'll kick in, you know, $10,000 or whatever amount, I don't agree with the city losing like $30,000 to $50,000 every year for a day and a half, you know? It's not bringing in revenue to the city. We're losing money every year on it. So it's not like we're in San Antonio and it's Fiesta where the city's making money, where people are coming and staying in hotels, you know, and staying and spending a lot of money. You know, we're just having, it's a good time, you know, and it's a nice event. But I don't think the city should be footing the bill for educate, or not education, sorry, entertainment, sorry.
Emmett?
Oh, I think we need to continue it. Couple of things to take into consideration. I was at the Memorial Day Bash this past end of May weekend. More than half the people, even, and it was a two-day event, were from out of town. Half the people that we talked to, that, those two days were from out of town. So chances are, those that came on Saturday spent the night. And we'll have to go back and look at the hotel occupancy for Saturday night. But I bet they saw some pretty good, strong numbers. Yes, we need to run Boot Fest with an eye on our spending. I think we're spending way too much money. I think we're paying way too much for some of the acts that we're bringing. While they may be quite entertaining, they're here for an hour, two hours, and we're paying them, you know, huge amounts of money. I think we ought to buy our own fence and charge at the gate, even if it's a couple of dollars. I think that also, we ought to buy our own stage. Instead of paying $30,000, I believe last time I saw, $30,000 to rent a stage, professional stage, very nice stage. But why don't we buy our own and then we can use it every year and then let other events use it as well? Buy our own fencing, and we can also make it available to other events as well. And so there are a lot of other things I think we could tweak with Boot Fest and continue to make it a big success.
Jeff, if you were elected mayor, would you be in favor of the city continuing to fund events like Boot Fest? Or is that something the city, or is that something the city should not play a role in?
I like Boot Fest. Certainly, we've looked at it as, should we try to capitalize and make money off of the event? This, this event is paid for with hotel occupancy tax funds. It's not paid by property tax. It's not paid by sales tax. It comes from the number of night stays in a hotel. That also funds various other things. This is a great opportunity for all of Victoria to come together and participate in an event. So we've kicked around over the, over the years whether or not we should charge. Still haven't come to a conclusion, obviously, because we're still not charging anything. My vision for Boot Fest, though, is I would like to see it slowly transition over the next couple of years so that it's going to be our big 200-year celebration party. And celebrate the heritage of Victoria through the years with different acts on stages, but maybe drop the name Boot Fest into something else. There's much more creative people than I. But that's just a vision I have of transitioning it to a different type of event. And we can always decide if we want to charge for it.
Thank you. That is all the questions that I have. So we'll give all, each of you a minute now to tell the potential voter, the voters that are watching, why you're the best candidate to be elected mayor to fill the term, or the unexpired term of Raleigh McCoy. Start with you, David.
Yes, I would say I'm the best candidate for the, I am going to bring a new way of thinking and looking at this because I haven't been in the system. I'm not going to be just the same cog in the, in the clock. And with that, you know, sure that we're going to have disagreements and everything. But at the end of the day, I want what's best for Victoria, you know? Like I was saying, I want, I want to help work on jobs, things for family. I've been working with, helping families and kids, you know, since before I just decided to run. I've been doing it for a couple of years. You know, I don't do it for the money. None of us are running for mayor for the money. You know, we're just doing it because we want to help out. And since getting hurt, you know, I still have that drive to help my community the best way I can. And I thought, why not? So I'm going to vote, or I'm going to have everyone hopefully vote July 3rd, vote for the crook. You know, I'm only a crook by name, not by policy.
Emmett, one minute to convince the voters to vote for you.
Well, you know, it's the experience, almost 40 years in economic development, worked for federal government. I didn't even know Jeff had worked for the congressman. Loughlin and I'd worked, I actually worked for him. I think you were an intern in Washington. I worked for him here and gained valuable experience in working for the congressman here, federal government, municipal government, economic development, a degree from the University of Texas. He's got a degree, a couple of them, I think, from, he had to get two, I guess, from A&amp;M to make up for the one I got. But anyway, we love to poke at each other on that. So you've got that, the trust, the trust factor is, you can trust me to get the job done. You can call on me. You got an issue, we're going to take care of it. You know, we heard a lot of excuses tonight, you know, projects that just continue to go on and on and on. And we're working on this and we're studying this. And, you know, I'm kind of getting a little tired of that. Just like our roads and our potholes, I'm tired of it. So let's get something done. Vote Emmett Alvarez, and we'll get it done.
Jeff, one minute for closing remarks to convince the voters to vote for you.
Okay. Thanks again, real quick, to Caleb Shaw, Ash, Bill Winlet. Appreciate it. I have the experience, the most experienced person up here with the City of Victoria and its government. I have the temperament to sit on council and lead council. I have the respect that I give to others and to all sides that wanted to participate and listen to, you know, and work through issues. I'm honest and trustworthy. And I'm active at the state capitol, working on issues for the city of Victoria. And I think I'm the best candidate for the job. I really look forward to leading the council and the city of Victoria. And I appreciate your vote, starting on June 16th.
Gentlemen, good luck. Thank you for being here this evening. Appreciate your candidness and the civil discussion that we had this evening. David, Emmett, Jeff, thank you very much. Good luck in the election, July 3rd. And we'll turn things back over to Caleb Shaw.
All right, guys. Thank you so much for tuning in. Did you have a good time?
I did. It was great.
Good. And a special thanks once again to each and every one of our candidates, both in the city council race and the mayoral race. Ash, Ashton, thank you. Ethan, Steve, crew, everybody did a great job. Thank you so much. And Victoria viewers, thank you so much for tuning in. You know, we try to give you something where you can hear some different questions, a little bit different type of format. But it doesn't work if you don't follow. So thanks so much for tuning in. One more time, starting tomorrow at 6:00 PM, we will be posting individual candidate interviews. All eight of these gentlemen sat down and had to listen to me talk their ears off for 30, 45 minutes or so. So we will start playing those, those interviews starting tomorrow at 6:00 PM, releasing one a day till it's done. Young lady, you have anything else?
I would just second that. Just make sure that you tune in and listen to what each individual candidate has to say, and then vote your beliefs.
And one more time, guys, election day is July 3rd. Early voting starts June 16th through the 29th. If you haven't done so, make sure you follow MeVictoria with Caleb Shaw on Lone Star News Network. Thanks so much for your time. And guys, we'll see you at the next one.